America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business is the adoption of the agenda for today's work session. The agenda for April ninth, two thousand and twenty five has been distributed to all members. Are there any corrections, additions, or changes? If there are none, the agenda will be adopted as presented. Our board clerk, Michelle, will provide an update on the upcoming Board of Education election.
Hi. This year's annual budget vote and board member election will be held on Tuesday, May twentieth. We have two board positions up for election this year. If you are interested in running for the board, I have petitions with me here tonight. See me after the conclusion of this meeting. They are also available in my office here at five thirty Liberty Street, or you can email me at ed and m at schenectady schools dot org, or call me at five one eight three seven zero eight one zero zero, extension seven six nine zero seven. All this information is also available on the school district's website, schenectady schools dot org. Also, starting this voting season, our website will have a poll place finder to make finding your polling location easier.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, Board Clerk, Michelle. The consent agenda includes items that are considered routine and are approved together in a single motion, unless a board member requests that an item be removed or separate discussion and vote. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda? We will proceed to vote on the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items four A through G? May I have a motion?
No.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, VP, and thank you, Board Member Kathy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to approve consent agenda items four A through G carries. So I will read the work session expectations, and we're just going to switch the presentations around. We're going to start with the ELL presentation, and then afterwards it will be the budget. And yes, Board Clerk.
Um, just, I didn't know, since we just did the personnel resolutions, if we just wanted to recognize Jennifer Fox and Dr. Chisholm.
Yes. Congratulations to both of you. You're gonna hear an even larger speech next board meeting, but we want to congratulate both of you. Thank you, for one, thank you for your work in Schenectady. Thank you for your work in Schenectady as well. And please do not be shy. There are cupcakes and there are fruits there. If I was sitting back there with all of you, I would be sneaking some of that stuff. So please feel free to grab anything if you like, okay? And again, congratulations to both of you.
And just to share, for Jennifer Fox, I mean, we talk about growing our own.
Yes.
This is just a perfect example of that.
And thank you, Board Member, or Board Clerk. Thank you. So with our work session expectations, we agree to focus and prioritize what's best for our students, follow the principle of one mic, one voice, create a safe space for all views, feeding each other and staff with respect, and commit to effective deliberation, actively listening and considering diverse viewpoints, even in disagreement. To ensure everyone has an opportunity to participate, please limit your remarks to three questions or two questions with a follow-up. So we will begin with Dr. Chisholm, the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, soon Superintendent, and Leah Akinley, Assistant Director of World Language E N L. So please welcome both of you and your team.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Coto, Board President Rivera, Board Members, community. We are really, really excited to present to you this evening on world language, ASL, English as a new language, and our newly anticipated dual-language bilingual education program. And so we have a great group of individuals who are passionate about all of the bodies of work that will be presented this evening, starting with Leah Akinley, our Assistant Director of World Language E N L, C R E. All the good things.
All the things.
As well as Dr. Jean Pierre, Principal Page, his Assistant Principal, Ms. Vascones, Assistant Principal Page, and Sarah Scott, who is our District Chair of E N L, and Cecily Carr, who is our ASL teacher, course, to our district this year. So at this time, I'm gonna turn over to Leah. Thank you.
So again, my name is Leah Akinley, Assistant Director of all the things listed. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to present yet again about highlighting the great things about the diversity, the multilingualism in our district. Great. Okay.
She's got a lag.
Okay.
She had to wait for it after.
It's a lag, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. So our work is not separate from the district's overall mission. It is an integral part of achieving our goals. So as we look at these strategic pillars, our focus is multilingualism and culturally responsive teaching, which aligns with student success, equity, and quality instruction. There is a little lag. So we're gonna start, we have like four phases of this. We'll go quickly, but we're gonna start with world language. So world language is, we have, Schenectady students currently have access to six languages, which is really awesome, that we've expanded throughout the past five years, ensuring that the development of global competence and career readiness. So we have American Sign Language, which is new this year, Arabic, Chinese, French, Russian, and Spanish. So our goal is to continue expanding opportunities for students to achieve proficiency in multiple languages, increasing their college and career readiness. And if those of you have a slide, well, if you click on some of the links, you can see different videos in the classroom, so. At your own time, like an interactive one. But I'm not gonna do it now. So I'm gonna introduce Ms. Cecily Carr, who is going to talk about ASL first.
Hello. I'm Cecily Carr, and I teach ASL at E C H S Cities as our campus and the high school. And it has been gaining popularity. The kids love it. We struggle a little bit, just like any other classes. Our current enrollment this year is one hundred and forty-two students. And for two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six school year, we will have ASL one, the incoming ninth grader, and ASL two, who are in ninth grade now, going into tenth grade. And this will be at Cities as our campus. I am on the committee establishing ASL standards for New York City because none exist right now. So that's exciting to be a part of that and to help get that going because it will be eventually a seal of biliteracy, as it should be. And we are, we are in a place where we are looking at future expansion of the ASL program. We are looking at online resources to help those students who are absent or who can't come to school when they're sick. It would be helpful to have an online resource to show them what they missed, and not just me. And we are excited to be able to share the program and the language and the culture with the students of Schenectady School District. These are two of my students. So for Black History Month, they had to read the book, A is for Advocacy, and it was done on YouTube, on YouTube. And each word was signed by students at the California Institute for the Down. And so they had to pick a letter and do the signs for that letter. And this is Ally. Ally did D for democracy. Do you wanna click on Ally? Yeah, that's right. So she's saying that D is for democracy and that we cannot have things control our own. Then we need to stand up and not be oppressed. And the next video is Alvin, Alvin Yerdyam. And he is saying N is for no. And you will see that sign a lot, but it's saying no for things that do not benefit us as a people. I mean, I think that's very appropriate for these times. And so not only do we have the signs, we have the culture and the dialogue as is appropriate for today. Let me just, I'm not sure I got it all. I think that's it. If you have questions, please feel free to ask. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I'm just happy to have the opportunity to work here and to share this language and culture with the students here. Thank you.
All right, so next, part two, is transitioning to English as a new language. So just to let you know, English as a new language is pertaining to the program, and English language learners are pertaining to the students. And I do have, there is a chart there that explains the different type of programming because it's a lot of letters. So I tried to be mindful of.
Acronyms.
Yes, acronyms. So our district has been, has seen a significant increase in English language learners over the past several years. This chart reflects national and statewide standard trends. And you can see from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four how we've increased drastically. And the five hundred and twenty-seven, again, it fluctuates, but we're currently at four ninety-five students that are enrolled in the program. And then between four ninety-five and five twenty-seven, those are students that are commanding, that still get services two or more years, two years out. So this, our, based off this, this is how we determine staffing for the next year versus the trend. So that's why we have two additional staffs for next year. As you can see, our population is definitely growing. And then the number of district languages, so we have twenty-one current languages spoken. We are very diverse, and that actually attracts a lot of staff or people to apply to our district because of the diversity in languages. It prevents, it prevents, presents both a challenge and an incredible opportunity, and one that we are embracing here. Graduation rate. So while we are seeing progress, graduation rate for our Ls remain in area of focus. We are implementing many opportunities for growth, such as more co-teaching models. We found that more co-teaching between the E N L teacher and the general education teacher allows for integrated language and content learning. And then the general education teacher learns a lot of those strategies. So that's actually something that we've been doing more in the elementary level as well as secondary, and it's been very successful. Increase after-school and summer support, and expanding bilingual education, which we're going to do in the fall and fall two thousand and twenty-six. So you can see that these are the cohort years. There was a dip, the cohort two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen, but gradually has increased, exempting COVID, obviously. So you can see the past, the two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty have increased. So our district provides three main program models. So this is where our growth is really happening, and it's happening drastically. And I'm really excited about it because the past four years, we've worked really hard to really figure out the best way to expand and support our Ls. So we currently have E N L. And E N L is mainly for students that are tested into the program that don't, do not speak English. This is just for Ls, and they are allowed a certain minutes depending on their level. In the fall, we're starting to work towards a transitional bilingual program. So this is, these are Ls that need the transition between their home language and English. So it takes about five to seven years to even learn a language. And this program is supposed to be between three and six, or three and seven, to help support students who have a foundation in Spanish to transition into English. Because we know if they have a strong foundation in their native language, it helps support them learning English. So this is something, we're gonna have fall two thousand and twenty-five, we're gonna have a Spanish language arts class in grades nine through eleven, where the students will, it'll help the students be bilingual and bilingual in Spanish. So we're gonna start Spanish, and then hopefully eventually Arabic, Pashto. I have a lot of, a lot of dreams. So our, and then next would be the dual-language bilingual education program, which is the most effective way to close all achievement gaps. And this is a long-term plan, pre-K through twelve would be amazing. We're gonna start with kindergarten and then progress throughout. And I will go over that on my board original language. So you do have a little chart there that kind of explains a little bit of each one because it gets a little tedious in the community. Great, so Sarah Scott, our department chair, is gonna talk about some highlights in our E N L program.
My name is Sarah Scott. I am the district E N L department chair, as well as an E N L teacher at the high school. And so I'd like to thank our data team because they actually created a system in our infinite campus. When a teacher or administrator clicks on a student's name, the name pops up. Hopefully, they have a cute little picture. And then there's a flag next to their name. It may say ELL, meaning they're an English language learner. It may say, indicate they have an I E P or a five oh four. Next to that is now a globe. Teachers, administrators can click on that globe, and it brings up the language that the family prefers to have communication in. So when a teacher or administrator is contacting a family member, they can preview and see what language that that family prefers, and so opening the lines of communication. We have also, as Leah mentioned, we have increased the E N L co-teach classes in, across our district. And as, again, as Leah said, it supports both the classroom and content area teacher and the E N L teacher. The E N L teacher learning the content at that grade level, and the classroom and content area teacher learning those E N L strategies. As we know, best strategies work for all of our learners. Also, we have increased the number of E N L teachers this year who are actually presenting P D across the district. That's in Schenectady Learns, as well as the Teacher Center. Our next piece of grand news is our Seal of Biliteracy program, which is increasing. In two thousand and twenty-three, which was last year, we began the program, and we did have five candidates who were successful in achieving that, one of which was a former L. And so our native English speakers received the Seal of Biliteracy in both Spanish and French, and one former L received it in Arabic. And this year, we've had, we had twelve candidates achieve this grand accomplishment. And it is a grand accomplishment because they do have to prove proficiency in all four modalities, listening, reading, writing, and speaking in both languages. Not just English, so our native speaker, our native English speakers also need to prove their level of literacy in English as well as in their second language. Our Ls need to prove their literacy, not just in English, but in their native language as well. And so two of our former Ls received that this year, one Spanish speaker and one Arabic speaker. Next year, we have quite a bit of interest, and our E N L department at the high school has already started talking up this program. And so we have quite a list of ninth graders from this year. So by the time they become twelfth graders, we should have quite a grand number, hopefully. So, thank you.
Yeah, and we're really, it is a very tedious process, and the kids are starting, starting to have momentum.
Yeah.
So the kids that are in ninth and tenth grade and eleventh are, are starting now to have a lot of interest, so. So next, I have a.
Yeah, so the little prince goes a bit more in-depth about what he wants. He states that he wants to achieve that with his own. So the pilot comes up with an idea. He decides to draw the sheep inside of a box.
A part of Everybody Counts, Everybody Learns is our district's belief in multilingual education. Our goal as a district is to promote a love of languages and cultures that will create a roadmap to guide learners to develop the skills to communicate effectively and participate in multilingual communities at home and around the world. Students develop interpretive, interpersonal, and presentational communication skills that will enable them to interact successfully with the global community. Earlier this month, twelve of our students earned the Seal of Biliteracy after demonstrating their skills during Spanish, French, and Arabic assessments. In Schenectady schools, there are more than five hundred English language learners in grades K through twelve with dozens of languages spoken, including Spanish, Arabic, Pashto, Urdu, and many more. Our students learn a number of important things, both in the E N L and content area classes.
The students needed to write a story using the story elements of problem, response, and resolution. And these were their stories.
The sheep was cold. He went to the barn. He got a cold.
They learn interpersonal communication skills, which allow them to communicate and carry out conversations with other English-speaking people while gaining proficiency in the English language in an academic setting.
The sheep is hungry. She went to start milk.
In Schenectady, we want to learn our population because we value diversity and respect the effort it takes to learn a new language in a new country.
So the two students that were communicating in Arabic, that Arabic won, and they were able to communicate, which is really, English-speaking have no background in Arabic. So it's really amazing to see and go into the classrooms and like, the students are communicating in other languages. And I'm monolingual, so I'm like, wow. They, you know, all that they do. And then the two teachers, they were, they were co-teaching at Woodlawn, E N L, and a kindergarten teacher. So it's been a really great experience this year. So, part three, dual language, really excited. So we are incredibly excited to launch the dual-language bilingual education program, which will officially launch two thousand and twenty-six. And the reason why we had to push it back staffing, and we want to make sure we do it with fidelity. So dual language is really built around three pillars. And the three pillars are high academic achievement, bilingualism, biliteracy, and social-cultural competence. The Y is equity and social justice, and its four are Ls. So one of the great things is that we were able to, we have a steering committee. We meet monthly, and we were able to come up with our mission and vision, which you do have in your packet. And the program will allow both English speakers and Spanish speakers to become fully bilingual, bilingual, in an equitable and inclusive environment. We are also looking into, it's called CYF, Students with Interrupted Formal Education. So those are students that have missed school, coming up as well with the program to support them as well in the future. So again, we meet monthly with the committee. We have two consultants, Dual Language Connections and the Multi State Association Bilingual Education, called MABE. We meet with them as well to work on our action plan, which there's a link there. You can see at a later date. And we're currently, again, working on the curriculum for Spanish language arts. I have three teachers that are currently doing that as well to start in the fall. So this is the, from two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and thirty-two, what it looks like, where we would add a class every year. So it would be one section in certain kindergartens, and we would add first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. And when I was seeing those dates, I was like, wow, both of my kids will be in college by two thousand and thirty-one. I'll have a lot of tuition to pay. So, also have one at home, though. But, and then eventually expanding to pre-K and grade six, and then all the way through with the transitional bilingual program, which again, that is Spanish language arts, as well as math and another subject in Spanish. So it would be a pre-K through K program. That's the vision. So our next steps is the timeline, which is also linked there. This has been like a four-year process. And when we started, it seemed very big because we are, in the capital region, it's only Albany. So Albany's had a program for more than twenty years. So bringing it to Schenectady is like amazing. And there's a lot of excitement. Today, we just had a dual-language kind of one-on-one P D. There's a lot of excitement in the community, the teachers. But with excitement and new programs comes, you know, some challenges and some unknowns that, again, doing a lot more professional development and making sure that we are planning very intentionally will allow for us to be successful when we open fall two thousand and twenty-six. So these are just some things that we've done in our committee work, talking about lottery registration, hiring, retention, community outreach as well. So I'm going to have Dr. Jean Pierre come up, the Page Principal, and talk about Y, Page.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. J P, the proud principal of Page Elementary Community School, the home of the Panda Leaders, where we cultivate love and genius every single day. Some people would say Y, Page. It took y'all four years to decide that, but it's all right. It's okay. It's okay. So you know there was a lot of consideration in terms of making Page Elementary Community School the home for the dual-language program. And there's many reasons why I would say we're the best fit for that program. So when we think about the commitment to multilingualism and culturally responsive education, you look at three areas. When it comes to culturally responsive education, you walk in our building, and you'll find that our teachers are integrating that into their curriculum and instruction. More importantly, the vision that drives our instruction is the five pursuits of Goldie Mohammed, which works on not only skills and building intellectualism, but also integrating identities. So students are learning about themselves and others. They're learning about criticality. How do they use what they've learned to create social change? And last, joy, right? And people think joy is all about Fun Friday. But really, my students are seeing themselves in the learning, and they're understanding that their academic identity is connected to everything that they learn. And for a fact that comes from our staff, both teaching, as well as our non-instructional staff, support that process. Secondly, we think about what we do in the building daily, right? Our assemblies, you probably heard, every month, we celebrate the Heritage Month. So students are celebrating different cultures, as well as their religions. So that's something that's just a part of what we do in our environment and our culture. And thirdly, when you think about our family and community engagement activities, we do have an international night, and everyone has an international night, but ours is really special. Ours is really special. And it's connected to what we do in the classroom as well. So teachers will talk about the flags during that day. And if you walk into our building, in the back area by the gymnasium, you'll see three hundred flags painted, which were painted by the community, students, and staff. So this is what we live every single day. It's not something we, we're just hoping to be a part of. Our E N L population, when you think about our E N L population, is very diverse. So all of those languages and cultures that were identified, we have all of those students in our building. So this is work we've been doing. But more importantly, when you look at our data, we have the second-largest population in the district, and most of our same. have the second largest population in the district, and most, about seventy percent of our students are exceeding or commanding when it comes to the nicest laugh. So that means that we're able to teach them how to read, speak, and write as they go through Page Elementary Community School. Supporting our diverse populations, our staff is very committed in terms of how they support all our students from all backgrounds. They're willing to speak different languages, so at any point, you could walk in our building, Ms. Vascones will be talking Spanish, I'll be talking Haitian Creole, and we have other folks who, both the adults and students understand that all languages are welcome and it's not an only English zone. So that'll be clear once you walk in the building. Our school designated as LSI, so it took us about two to three years to move from a school who was in need of improvement to one who's now in good standing. So we're really looking to go from good to great. So when we talk about academic achievement, that's what we're trying to head, and we think the Dual Language Program will be a great program, both to support our ENL students as well as our English-speaking students. And then lastly, what other place but us to be the model, right? And the community knows that. So I'm not gonna be shy about that. I'm not gonna be shy about that. So I believe we have all the ingredients, right, to make this Dual Language Program really work and continue to work for years to come. So if we can be the model that helps us to begin to upscale this program throughout the district. So we're prepared to welcome our students in Fall 2026. We're all talking about it, the staff is talking about it, we're excited, and we're gonna continue to cultivate that love and genius with those students as well. And, what'd you say, 2032? 2032, you'll hear more about how wonderful this program has been. All right, so thank you. Thank you for inviting Page to be a part of this process.
We did, on March fourth, we did have a faculty meeting with Page. You can see, I printed this out for you. This is the one pager that they got as well. You can look through that, and the PowerPoint is also linked. Okay. All right, Mrs. Vascones is going to talk a little bit about the programming.
Gracias. Good evening. Ms. Vascones, buenas noches. So I'm here to explain a little bit what the Dual Language Program will be, or will look like, and the home of the Panda Leaders. This is a bilingual education model that will foster biliteracy and bilingualism and multicultural competency in our building. The model will look, it will be a fifty-fifty model, it's a two-way immersion program. Again, we're gonna start with Spanish. Right now, I think we are a little bit halfway there. As Dr. JP was saying, you'll find those speaking different languages in the hallway, and that's kind of a way to introduce that there, right? And getting everyone comfortable with that, just moving among languages. It's an instructional time to split between, or the instructional time will be split between English and Spanish, same time for, spread out throughout all of our subjects, specials and core, it's fifty-fifty. And we're really, really pushing for it to keep it that way, right? Making sure that all our kids are learning both languages and can move from one to the other in those classes. Equal values placed in both languages. Students learn the academic context in both. Where they'll go in that math subject, they can, in one semester, speak about the subject in one language and then move and continue with English or Spanish. It's designed for both English language learners and native English speakers, which is the beauty of this program. And the classroom, look, it will have at least twenty students, thirteen English language learners, and seven non-English language learners. Yes. That's what we're looking forward to, and we are very excited about this. So, thank you.
So just to go over, this is also interactive too, so you can eventually, later on, link to different conferences we've been to, site visits. We've done a lot of professional development the past four years, school visits, conferences, and collaborating with state and national organizers. And it just kind of shows you the book studies we've done and the benefits to bilingual And just to reiterate too, this is something that the state is also mandating, so we are now working towards that compliance. All right, part four, culturally responsive education. So in addition to our multilingual efforts, we are committed to culturally responsive education, which is a student-centered approach to recognizing the values of students' unique cultural strengths, languages, and experiences, using them to create a more inclusive, equitable learning environment that promotes student success. So some of our key initiatives in CRE are curriculum audits, I'm currently working with Jessica Valente for pre-K curriculum. We are doing professional growth, professional development with Growth Mindset, Nicholas Clay, he's doing a series on seeing Ls from an asset-based perspective. We just today had Dual Language Bilingual Education 101. We did Schoolhouse Rap Assembly at the middle school, and there's also a link there and that you can see the video. The students had so much fun. Anna Robinson and I were dancing on stage at the community event, so that was fun. So just a lot of different opportunities for our community to see CRE in an assembly, but also in classrooms. And then also interview questions, we have updated as well. So I want to thank the board for your support in expanding multilingual education. As we move forward, our priorities will be to continue growing bilingualism throughout the district and ENL programming to ensure professional development opportunities for educators and engage family and communities in this work. So I welcome any questions and look forward to continued collaboration. Thank you, Cynthia. Let's start with Board Member Kathy.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm not quite clear, will we be busing children from other elementary schools to Page for a particular class during the course of the day? Is that how that will work?
Yes.
Get to the twenty students?
Yes.
Okay, so twenty is what we're starting with for the bilingual type of program, because we've got five hundred kids.
Right.
Who need English language.
Right, so we're focused on Spanish. So out of the five hundred, I would say two hundred and, I think, forty are Spanish speakers, and it ranges between K through twelve. So we have a small percentage that are kindergarten that will be eligible, but the New York State requirements this year, Part 154, requires if you have twenty or more in a grade level, that you have to have a program in dual language or the transitional bilingual program. So that's why we're kind of starting on both ends and then meeting in the middle. So we're gonna start in the fall for the secondary, nine through grades nine, ten, and eleven for Spanish Language Arts. And then the following year, we're gonna start in kindergarten with Dual Language Bilingual Education, and then we'll start to grow and be in the middle where we'll have a pre-K through K twelve program.
So follow on there, the nine, ten, eleven, where will that be offered?
So that's Spanish Language Arts, so that'll be offered at freshman academy, and it'll also offer the high.
So we'll be busing kids from?
So that, the Transitional Bilingual Program, we're not busing anybody, the teachers will be in those buildings.
Oh, they'll be in, at freshman academy?
And the high school.
And the high school.
Yes.
Because that's where we tend to live, being primarily. There was something else that I had in my mind there. How is the word being spread to the other elementary schools to have young people, you know, be registered in the, among the twenty students that we would be offering at the elementary school?
So we did have like an online parent information center, parent information PD, just learning a little more about dual language, and that's something that we need. Once we decide on the budget and busing and the lottery and enrollment, we're still working on those logistics. Then we will do the heavy community work probably towards the end of the summer, because it'll take about a whole year to really do that outreach, and then enrollment will start spring 2026.
Oh, so we won't be starting at the elementary school in the fall of twenty-five?
Right.
Okay, so.
So we have a little time, not too much.
A little.
A little more time.
And I just wanted to clarify a little bit with the busing question. So the students aren't going to be bused for specific classes. If they are, through the lottery, decided that they're gonna be a part of the Dual Language Program, they will be assigned to Page.
Oh, so they won't be going back to age, coming from one school and going back to another?
They will be bused, they will be bused because they are now a student assigned to the Dual Language Program at Page.
So Zoller would?
Correct.
They would not be part of Zoller, they would be over at Page?
Correct.
At this point?
Correct.
Do you have any sense of the interest in how many?
Well, I can say that when we were doing some of the listening sessions last school year, and we started bringing those up at the different schools, there seemed to be quite a bit of interest from the community members, from parents, looking forward to further exploring this as an option. And I think it's even wonderful for native English speakers, right, to, it's the full immersion program for them too, so. But again, through the lottery system.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Not a question, no. I have plenty of comments.
I do have a question in terms of recruitment. I'm just, I wonder, how are we, and I know it's still fairly early, but I'm wondering how are we doing, how are, how is recruitment going for some of these positions?
For the?
The teachers.
So, for the teachers. So the Spanish Language Arts, we actually have hired already for that for the grades nine, ten, eleven, so that's already done.
Okay.
For the bilingual, that's why we had kids, and we still have some interest. I'm trying to internally, there's some interest, but it's a struggle, because I know with certification, that's a whole nother. So we've done a lot, I feel like our district has everything that our consultant has said, I'll do that, we're already, we're like really already doing. So we're just being patient, and we don't wanna rush and hire, we wanna make sure it's a good fit. So it's very time-consuming, but it's gonna be worth the wait.
And then I do have another question, since we're in budget times. My first question is, in terms of materials and supplies, do you have what you need?
Yes. So we are currently, well, tomorrow, actually, we have a meeting with the steering committee talking about curriculum. I've got a lot of samples, that's already vendors that I'm working with, so really spending the time vetting those curriculum, but it's already in the budget. And working with the Office of Teaching Learning, Rebecca Gleason, like Cobalt, Trevor Tripp, they are already in the know, and they've also put money aside too for budget.
Okay. And then, again, around the budget again too, in terms of marketing, would you need mu, again, I'm only asking this because we're in budget cases. So is there money allocated for marketing this? And do you need that? Okay, I see her.
I'm just wondering. I like what you have out.
So. She wanted money. So part of the timeline is thinking about the order, the logistics of all this, right? So the logistics, the primary focus is hiring, getting, looking at the curriculum, vetting the curriculum to make sure that we have the right, you know, curriculum in front of our kids, and not just short-term, but what do we need for K through five over time, right? Or then six and eight over time. The conversation, what we do is we do have monthly meetings with the Page team to discuss the logistics. And one of the things that we have discussed is around the marketing plan for this, even the marketing and branding of the building, and what does it look like inside of the building? So that's not anything that we budgeted for out of this year. But as conversations continue and we really identify what it is that Page would like and needs, then we will look for, to put those things into the next year's budget. But right now, we're focused on trying to hire, we're even looking for district-wide ENL bilingual coach to support not just in Page, but, you know, classrooms across the district with the higher numbers of students, and with the curriculum and resources. So that's the priority right now with this budget.
Well, now I have a question. Okay. It's a question that's really exciting. I'm sure that, given our commitment to partnerships and community, that folks are already looking at what are those potential community partnerships, so that we can make sure the community is aware, especially for the targeted members that will be interested in this program to be able to have that information. Wait, I'm gonna make it a question, right?
Yes.
Absolutely. I made it a question.
I see that.
So we are really, really excited.
Comment.
Yeah, no, go ahead. We can.
No, I, I'm super, super thrilled to see all of the hard work. It is evident, this is hands down, like, exciting, exciting work. The Schoolhouse Rap Assembly, I have to check out, because you just took me back to my childhood, the Schoolhouse Rap, and I'm like, oh. So I'm imagining, like, maybe a little twist on that. But no, I just, yeah. I'm just, I think, really, really excited to see this take off. And again, I have to, again, put selfishly the plug, I would love to learn ASL, so I don't know where it exists for adults, or board members, or, you know, community, like, I would love that opportunity. I think that's fantastic for our kids, so thank you.
Board Member Kathy.
At, at Page, I understand that there'll be a Spanish class, will there be Russian and Arabic and twenty students for each of those languages that you listed, or not?
Oh, no, so the languages are mainly secondary, so at the high school.
Okay, but you will be having classes in Arabic and Russian and Spanish.
So we have it on grades nine through twelve for the six languages. And then in middle school, we just have French and Spanish. And then the Dual Language Bilingual Education Program will be just Spanish. It is a dream to have one day Arabic as well, but I'm just gonna start with Spanish for now.
Okay, so you've got the six languages at the high school.
Yes, secondary.
Basically, is the way.
Yeah.
And they can enroll in those if they're interested, even as a beginner.
Yes, they have a choice. So that's very rare, most districts just do Spanish and French.
Very bling. Yeah. So my comments now.
Okay, do my question.
So my comments, because I already did my question.
Yeah.
I'm not always happy to be at board meetings. I'm not, it's like, sometimes it's like, oh God, I'm going to a board meeting, what's gonna happen? This makes me happy, this is wonderful, and what I specifically wrote down was, thank you for your intentionality and hard work, because I do know how long this has been going on and the commitment to do it. I also know when we're thinking about, is this something our community wants and needs? It has been expressed, it's not a surprise, and not just from parents, but from students. Students who very much have said they don't want an erasure of their language or their culture just to be able to be educated. And so hearing from students specifically about their excitement in this, this presentation leads us to know that we are listening to students and that we are committed to their full education, just like New York State said, every child deserves a quality education, and this will allow us to achieve it. So thank you.
Thank you for your support.
One quick one. Where is, is Pavilamento?
Oh, yes.
The bottom one, is, which island is that?
Yes, so that is Aruba.
Aruba.
It's a rural part of Aruba, and it's very hard to find a translator for, so we haven't been successful unfortunately, but yes.
Most of the rest of them I do, but.
I can go to Aruba.
Yeah.
I'll go take a crap.
Yes, I learned a lot in this room.
For sure. I did want to reiterate, because I did attend all of the listening tours, and that was the piece, actually, that people were excited. I mean, everyone, their eyes lit up when they heard that we're doing these, you know, and it was preliminary at that time, so I know there was a question about that. I mean, in all the listening tours, that was what made people, yay, excited about what we're doing. And again, I've seen a lot of the work that you all, I'm just reiterating what Jamaica said, you guys have been working really hard on this, and you can see how intentional you have been with this, and this is really important. I don't know how, you know, I don't know how much people realize how important it is to know a second language. This is huge. It brings so many, and I'm speaking to the choir, so many possibilities to our students, it's unbelievable, and it also helps them hone in on English language as well. So I appreciate all of you, Sarah too, I mean, all of you for all the work, because I've seen it. So I appreciate all of you, Sarah too, I mean, all of you for all the work, because I've seen it. Chris Han, Vera, Dickie, thank you. I mean, you guys have really dedicated a lot of time. And I echo, I mean, echoing a lot of the stuff that the board member saying, sign me up. I mean, seriously, but. Yes, please, please. But thank you so much for all the work that you do. And we want to hear more about ENL or ELL and the work that you do. Because sometimes it is in the back burner and it shouldn't be. This is important work, so thank you, thank you for all that you do. Thank you, thank you. And I love that Spectrum video. I didn't know we were on Spectrum. What was that?
Doctor Coto.
Oh, okay. Oh, very nice.
And the links are all in the presentation.
Yes, I was interacting, so we have time.
Yeah, awesome, thank you. So thank you again, and we will continue with our last presentation, CFO Terry. Welcome, budget presentation or budget update.
Yeah, it's going to be a quick budget update, very quick, not much changes since our last time we met. Hey, guys. Our pillars, again. All right, as of today, update from New York State. Earlier today, the session adjourned with no budget agreement. They expected to add another extension because they're going to break for Passover and Easter break. So that's basically a statement I received earlier today from New York State as well. So just wanted to update for the minute, and we have no move on the budget as of today. Once again, our budget maintains all current programs and staffing levels. And as we will present in more detail the next, I did increase the budget by approximately 1%, 1.2% from the prior time I explained. And we added a few more positions with the restored practice team, added some costs that will be covered during the summer with our safety team, with all the various programs that we have going on. We had an increase in our health insurance, remember the last time we were setting the rates? Unfortunately, we're industry, we're about the same as local schools in the industry, 9.2 and 9.8%. We are communicating that with all of our employees to let them know what that will look like, providing them the rate sheet so that you can plan ahead of time prior to the 7-1.
What was that, I missed the?
9.2 and 9.8% increases in our health insurance.
Health insurance.
Yep, our premium increase. And obviously, you know, that's not a true reflection of what the contributions of the employees, because they contribute 15 to 20%, and we do the 80%. We provided a five-year history of what that looked like previous to our five years. And for the previous five years, we were approximately like 3.3, 0% for a couple of years, 1.9% on both plans. So it is a large increase and we're aware of that and we reflected that in the budget. But with the current times and the industry of the healthcare and pharmacy costs all increasing, we are, you know, basically the same as the other regions, if not a little bit lower than most of the districts that I'm aware of, that I have seen there increase. But our increase in budget, again, state aid, no update. We did increase the amount of fund balance, reviewing the current balance. And again, we talked about this last time. Yes, it's not the perfect world, but we are not raising taxes as of today. We have enough savings in the current year budget with our additional aid and with the fund balance. You know, we are still reducing the amount we are using by a little bit more than a million. But with the recent developments of increased costs and adding new positions and sustainability, I believe we could do that moving forward. Because we still do have a healthy balance in the fund balance. And we will continue to fund that as necessary, even with expecting to use the amount in the next year's budget. We thought at this time it was appropriate to continue at that pace if we have and can maintain what we are currently saving. And I'll provide it more detailed line by line at the next meeting, this is just another graph. Basically similar to the last one. Federal updates, I know we've had questions, concerns. Obviously everywhere you look in here now, there's been a lot of developments. I just wanted to bring attention because you guys asked about it previously and just so we're all on the same page. Our school breakfast and lunch program, currently we are a community eligibility provision, which basically, based on the number of students who automatically qualify for free and reduced, we, under this provision, we are able to allow breakfast and lunch free to all of our students. The, what you've been hearing about the cuts to this program, right now, the threshold for a school district is 25%. If your school district meets that threshold, they do provide the CEP. They're looking to raise it to 60%. And that would have impacted about 24,000 schools based on what I read. But here at Schenectady, it would not have any impact on us because we are automatically 77%. So we are still following under the guidelines of the CEP. Still not a good thing, but just to let you know, our national school breakfast and lunch program, at the last year 2324 audit, we had about $7 million in federal funding from the programs, including our summer program.
Would they be paying reduced, sorry, wait.
No, no, that's fine, they may reduce the amount, but we are eligible for what they currently pay under the provisions and what our current students' needs are.
Even though we're above 60%, there could be reductions.
There could be.
In terms of the amount they pay.
Yeah, there hasn't been any communication about reducing the amount they are currently paying, which has been more communication of the community eligibility difference over 10 years. I believe the guideline, like $22 billion, only over 10 years. And then the elementary and secondary school, elementary relief, emergency relief related to the COVID grants that we've had that have expired. During that process, at the end of September of '24, they had what they called the late liquidation. We were, we were not able to actually pay everything that we expected to spend due to the timing. But we had all those funds encumbered at the deadline and they allowed extensions for schools to extend through March of 2026. One of those things was our playground flooring because of the weather constraints. We weren't able to put the rubber flooring on, we were waiting for the spring and have everything done. Another was supplies, materials that we ordered and utilized, you know, for the summer enrichment program, some equipment that we ordered for the teachers' classrooms and programs related to the summer enrichment, transportation, and other expenses that we had through the summer. The deadline, they encumbered, we just didn't expense it. That was $4 million. There was an order that they're not going to fund those dollars for the extension. We are currently reviewing that. As you know, everything that has been ordered has been, you know, has been challenged, has been, you know, so we are currently looking at that, what does that really mean? We have expended the money now, so it's not like we are setting up to get that money back. Hopefully, New York State, you know, other states are, you know, going after that. So as of now, it's on a holding pattern right now, doesn't really affect our next year's budget. You know, we have the receivable set up. If we don't get it, we'll just transfer the money over from next year's budget, or current year budget. But as of now, there's no guidelines if that's going to stop or not. Just letting you know, we have $4 million out there. I think New York State was like 78, 7 million dollars for schools that did the late liquidation and that are being impacted by that. So we are, you know, currently reviewing that, making sure that we're in a good position for that. And then moving forward, you know, we're still waiting for the 2526 final budget, final review of expenditures and revenue for the current year. Again, we're in a good place right now, projecting where we are. We have stopped, not necessarily stopped, but making the buildings have their purchases completed by the 4/1, so we are able to close out our books by June 30th. But we do continue working for, with them if there's like an emergency expenditure that's necessary. But as of April 1st, if you haven't put in any order yet, you know, that you've budgeted for, then we're just reminding them that by April 1st, they have all that done. So where we are currently, we have a better idea, so we're able to project for the budget. Transportation bids are due April 21st, we had part of them done. We got good responses, you know, we're getting a lot of vendors that are asking and we have had a reduction in costs, so that's a good thing. So by doing these transportation bids, we expect to have a little more savings than that moving forward. BOC's commitment, just finalizing some of the services we receive for BOCs that are also impacted. We got an email today, some of the grants that they receive, that they provide services to our school, you know, are impacted. So we have to look at that and see where that ends up. And then our special education services, we're always working closely with student support and the special education department, make sure we identify all the students' needs, all the necessary tuitions and where the placements may be. You know, we're doing it now for September, so that could change. But we always make sure we have nothing to budget for any unexpected cost for next year or any additional cost. We will adopt the budget next meeting, then we'll have a public hearing on the 7th and then the budget vote on May 20th. Any questions?
Yeah. Terry, do you think that we can realistically go on the 23rd? Like a nice?
Yeah, you gotta have, yeah, you have to have, yeah, state guidelines, we have to have the budget adoption. We'll have, like where we are right now, we're good. Like I said last meeting, everything's in there, we did have some increased costs, but that's just more of a like, hey, can we afford this, can we do this? There's a need for it, how does it look? And with the current savings, yeah, that's fine. I don't think our state, if they come back and reduce our state aid, like I said last meeting, I was considerably budgeting for the foundation aid, if you reduce it by what our projections were for enrollment, we probably are back up to where we projected to be. But I still have the number at the lower number, just so we're safe in knowing where we stand. So yes, we will adopt it, we are in a good place, we have everything identified. And we continue to work and add, you know, but we are in a very good place right now.
The $4 million, just so I'm clear on that, you called it late?
Late liquidation, what they, yeah.
Now, does that mean that they're not recognizing the fact that at this point that we have committed to $4 million and so on? So we could end up short $4 million, which needs to be accommodated in the 2526 budget? That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, we paid for that items already, so it's not like we would just have to, right now, we're sitting in our federal fund. We would just have to move it over to our general fund. That's the determination, if that's how it's going to finalize.
You mean, move it over for bookkeeping purposes?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. The money's been expended, it's not like we don't have the.
Into 2425, coming out of there.
Yeah, we could pay for this year if necessary, or next year if necessary. But I don't want to do that yet until we have a final determination that we're not going to get. I did see something out there that you could appeal if you provide like what the program was, what you did with the money and how it works. So we're just going to look at that option, but we're really waiting for direction from the State Department of Ed and see how we should really go forward and how other states are going to handle it.
Okay, I don't have the slide up there, but with regard to the fund balance, it showed that we plan to use 8 million in something in 2526. And what are we anticipating at the end of 2425 in fund balance? Will there be something left that we can, not just, not just would be general fund balance, but would be able to be applied to all of those reserve accounts that we have?
Yep, I'm projecting that, you know, about 14, 12 to 14 million savings. So by applying 8 to next year and then funding the other parts of the reserves, we determine necessary, that's allowed if we're in that limit. And then our unrestricted, obviously, will go up because our budget went up a 4% of the following year. So we'll make sure we're maintained at the 4% level there.
Okay, and the last one I have is, I think I sent the question with regard to the school-based health that came up.
Yeah.
When I attended the, and I saw the response, I asked about the cost of the Medicare that we bill to Medicaid, that we bill to Medicaid, and that if that's dropped for school-based health programs or?
That, we don't bill anything for the school-based health programs. The program that runs it, the organization that runs it does all the billing.
Okay.
Students have to register with the school-based health organization to get reimbursed. We don't do any, all we do is provide the space.
Okay.
We do not do any of the billing. So what they're saying is some of that funding to the school-based health may be cut. I didn't see that was guaranteed. I did look that up and there's nothing really that's saying that's guaranteed cuts. So it would be the organization that runs it in our buildings that would be impacted.
So. Kathy, I'm just going to have Jamaica ask her question.
No, no, well, just finishing up the thought on that school-based health, that it was $320,000, thereabouts.
That's not school-based health, that's the Medicaid money we receive for our special education that gets services.
That was a different.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, on the federal, yeah. We get Medicaid money from billing to Medicaid for students that get services from our providers within our district. It has nothing to do with the school-based health, it has something to do with like our special ed students.
Gotcha.
That would be right OTPT speech and we're able to build with the parents cassette and all that too. So it's not something that, we continue working on that to get that done. But that could be impacted too, but that's.
Yeah, I don't know.
So it sounds like we're in the same situation that many have been when it comes to federal dollars of, there was already a commitment, that $4 million was committed, like, hey, we're going to give you this money. And then the question of them changing their minds about giving us the money, where the New York State Attorney General has pushed back every single time that it has happened for any other funding to say, you can't not give us money that was already committed. And so while we as a district are, you know, following up and making sure we're crossing Ts and dotting Is, that there is this larger picture of RAG, I almost cussed, of not going to just sit by and let it happen. It's very likely that if this moves forward, we ain't going to just let it move forward as a state. So there will be a couple of things for us to watch, if I'm like understanding this correctly, what are the protocols for us as a district to follow to make sure we get the money? But then also watching that larger picture and New York as a state saying, hell no, give us our money. Okay.
Great for you.
Anything else I could do to not cuss?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good commentary.
Okay, so we don't have any summary items, so I'm going to go to, if there is no further business to discuss, I declare this meeting adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.